I'm going to hold all your questions and comments until after participating city council members have spoken and they're going to get 10 minutes each to tell us all about themselves, their happy selves and what a good job they're doing and we're going to listen to that and then we're going to get on and have you ask questions at the microphones here because all of our input is going through the mixer now. So don't shout out from the audience, you want to ask a question, get up and go to a microphone. So as without further ado, I'm going to let Mr. Paul take it over and he's going to moderate it and we'll get on with business.
Isn't it a beautiful day out and evening out? It's just wonderful, absolutely fabulous. And I do want to say that I want to thank everybody for being here and a little bit of an explanation because I used to be a school superintendent and I kind of know how procedural things have to be. And some of the reason you only see two representatives from the board is because the Brown Act only allows for that from each one of these boards. Okay? I'm not making excuses for the two cities that aren't here, that's a different issue. But you do have the legal requirement met by both of these cities to be here. So it, listen, I can tell you from vast experience, when you get three board members together in one place and they're not supposed to be there, what a political hot potato that becomes, isn't that right? Besides violating the law and then they get cited and fined and things like that. So that's why that's happening. Anyway, but I want to thank everybody for being here and I know that everybody thinks this is sort of a thin group of people here, but I want to tell you how mighty you are because you are here. And I mean that. There are people in Sacramento right now that know about us meeting and I don't think there are the political suasion of everybody in the room, anybody in the room, but these people do not like the fact we're meeting. Just that we're meeting. We're here. So I congratulate and thank everybody for being here and putting pressure on those down in Sacramento who seem to be really running astray right now. Do you know what I mean? It's really kind of funny. Anyway, so let's go ahead and get started because it is about you being able to communicate openly and freely with your city council members and getting some input from them, you get input and so on. Couple of things though, let me go through and introduce everybody. Stan Cleveland, you know, Yuba City Mayor. John Buckland, Yuba City, City Councilman. Chris Pettigo, Marysville City Councilman. And Stephanie McKenzie, Marysville City Councilwoman. Anyway, let's go through the rules. Now Larry makes these rules up for me. Now those of you that listen to my radio show know I don't follow rules well. That's sort of like an understatement. Anyway, so I'm going to do my level best to communicate this to you. These are the rules. Oh God. Each of you in turn, that's you four, Larry, you didn't write this. Each, each of our guests in turn will have up to 10 minutes to introduce themselves, a little background and what issues you think your constituents are interested in. After all four have had their say, the time is yours. Does that mean me? Me? Larry, does that mean me? Oh boy. You can address some common center Yuba issues, statewide issues, local issues, or open it up to attendee questions and comments, which will be the first thing that I do. All of you will be allowed to come up after they make their presentations and ask questions. We have two microphones on each side of the room over here. Please do not ask repetitive questions and don't come up five or six times. Oh, I remember this, I'm going to just give somebody else a chance to make sure that they can ask a question as well. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and start with Stephanie McKenzie from Marysville City Council.
It's on? Oh, I am on. Okay, should I stand?
Well, you can stand.
I'll stand so you can see me.
You can, you can step up over here, we can see it better. I'm just kidding.
Are you kidding? Okay, good. Okay, I'm good right here. Well, I'm Stephanie McKenzie. I am newly elected council member in Marysville this last round of elections and I really don't have any background in politics at all, never aspired to it at all necessarily in my conscious thinking and so, but in the past, I realized lately that I've been very passionate about political things, especially in education. I'm a teacher and have raised a family and so all of those things having to do with schools have been very important to me in the past and continue to be as I'm a teacher now. I teach kindergarten out at Ella Elementary School and I live in Marysville. I have four grown children and I, my oldest daughter just had my 14th grandchild two weeks ago, so I've got a big family, happy family. I'm a loving grandmother, having lots of fun with that. And I am really enjoying being on the city council now. It's the one, one of the things that I've enjoyed the most is getting to know all, all of you. I have known some of you previously, but I'm getting to meet a lot of wonderful leaders in our community and I'm very encouraged because I'm finding that there are men and women of integrity who are in leadership positions in our communities and that's been very encouraging to me. So I'm grateful for that and I'm on a learning curve right now that's very challenging, but it's good. And some of the things that I feel like my constituents have been interested in in Marysville have been parks, the maintenance of our parks, how are we going to get them looking nice and up to speed as they should be in the city to enjoy. And another thing obviously is roads and that's a big issue for all of us is our road conditions. Another thing that people have been concerned about is, I'm trying to think of what that was. I'll come, I'll come back to me in a minute. But, so we are looking at ways to approach those issues in the budget this, this year. Those will be coming up for our, looking at those proposals next week actually, on the 20th. And so we're trying to work with our money. We have that new tax increase that has allowed us to have our city workers back full time and which is encouraging our city manager that we can be a little more productive and so we're trying to make that many work well for the police and the fire as they had promised before with that tax increase. So one thing that has been, something I've been working with is pastors, actually a group of pastors I've been meeting with. We've been praying for the city, praying for ideas of ways that they could be involved in interacting with a city in a meaningful way to make a difference in, in whatever kind of ways. And some of the ways that they have been thinking of serving is actually caring for the parks. And we have one church who's going once a month and taking care of Miners Park in East Marysville on 14th and 15th and they've been doing a beautiful job and they work with Ken Alameda who's a public works, not the director, but he's in charge of that, that little department over there. And they've been working really well together and that group is doing such a great job. They're actually pulling in people from the rescue mission to help with some of the labor on that. And so some of the other churches that have been meeting with us and talking are saying, hey, maybe we can do a part two. So that's encouraging. I think we'll be seeing some changes in that. Another group that I'm working with is the business focus group in Marysville and they're interested in interfacing with the businesses to support new businesses and existing businesses and the city to see how there can be a good working relationship to resolve any kind of things that might come up. And so I'm encouraged by that and those people are actually helping with aspects of the bounce back plan. For example, the banners that was part of that plan to denote the different sectors of the city like the medical arts district and the downtown district and whatever districts we have, I don't know the whole list. But there, there's a plan in action right now. They're working together with the city manager, coming up with the designs, working with the arts council and the designs for that. And so, so there's, there's things going on and I think we're going to start seeing some changes in the, in the way Marysville's looking hopefully and that's encouraging to me. Also something that's been really fun is baseball. We've got the baseball team in Yuba City and in Marysville and I think that's a great thing for our two communities, bringing us together and bringing some life in and some interaction between the two of us, healthy and positive. And so I'm excited about that.
Thank you, Councilman Chris Pettigo of City of Marysville. I've spoke here before and I know many of you. I graduated from Sutter High School, class of 1990. A little bit about me, I graduate, after I, I moved to Marysville in 2010 and it's really actually a fun story. I watched a debate on the Appeal Democrat and I saw a candidate who I thought would really do well. And so I went to a meet and greet and I have been going to city council meetings. This will be, I will be working on my fourth year. I will be up for reelection next year. I have attended, out of all the city council meetings, I think I've missed three. None, one as an elective representative and none as a citizen. I've learned the craft of being a good city councilman, being open, being receptive, listening to my constituents. And Marysville has turned around. It's been a slow, steady climb, but we're getting there and my colleague touched on roads. Our roads are, have been neglected for years and we're slowly going to start fixing the worst of the worst. It's something that's needed to be done for a long time. One of the other things we're working on is solar power, offset some of our costs on our buildings. We have lots of places in the city of Marysville where we can put solar. But ultimately, the things that drive me are to bring back and celebrate the history of our great little city. You know, Stephanie talked about banners. That's going to be great. It's going to highlight our downtown. But some of the, we have so much history in our city. We have a city-owned cemetery. It's for me to have turned Marysville around is to tell folks, this is a destination. We're going to make it a great little city. So many times we, we visit places and I bring back ideas and we implement them. We're talking for the first time, as long as I can remember, food trucks in Marysville. You know, we're going to make it an open inviting city and one of the things that my colleague didn't touch on that I will, we're going to be getting a new city website. And one of the things we want to be able to do is, is have our businesses be able to interact with the city. So if you're running something, we can get it up on our website. We want to support our businesses and help the best we can. We need to be open and receptive to promoting what we have. And for years, the knock on the city of Marysville has been the city of no. Well, that is not the case anymore. We're working towards making it the city of yes, let's get these things done, let's move forward. And it's a great place to live. We have some great public art now. We just, thanks to a company from Yuba City, Keller Williams Realty, we put in little libraries so that people who can access our public library will have access to books and will be in nine of our city parks. We have a veterans art park in Marysville, which is a great place. It tells anyone who visits, it's all the other places they can see to celebrate our veterans. It's an amazing, amazing use of public space and we're just going to keep turning the corner.
See, Chris was really smart. He shut the, the microphone off before he handed it to me, hoping I wouldn't know how to turn it back on. There's another Brown Act in California that we have to be aware of and that's that Brown Act down in, in Sacramento. So, good evening. Thank you for inviting me. Larry, thanks for reaching out. It, it's important, I think, that we have this opportunity to, to come out and speak, not just at a city council meeting, but wherever we're at, if we're being engaged by the public is to help inform the public of what we're doing, some of the projects that we're working on and other things. I think we live in a great community. Would you guys agree? We live in a great community. Let me tell you a little story and it kind of goes with tonight's opening. I was at a graduation at Yuba City High School the other night and about 12 members of that graduating class stood up and were recognized for entering or their, their desire to enter the military and they had already signed papers to move forward with the United States Military in some capacity. The 4,000 people at Yuba City High School that evening stood up to a standing ovation for 30 seconds. We live in a great community. I've been a council member for six years. I spent the, prior to this last six years, I spent 32 years as a police officer in Yuba City, retired as a lieutenant from Yuba City Police Department. And I learned a tremendous amount about our community, about our, the citizens, how the city operated and that gave me some interest to become a city, a member of the city council. I'm a business owner. I've taken, my wife and I have found it very important to reinvest in our community. And so we have, have started about three years ago, three and a half years ago, we took on a, a large warehouse project, revitalized that warehouse project. It's right in the middle of Yuba City. It was a dilapidated pigeon coop, to, to put it politely. And we revitalized that and our leasing company actually handles a family entertainment business that is in there leasing from us. But we also, my wife and I operate Millennium Kart Racing, which is something that is not found in a city the size of Yuba City. There's only 156 indoor kart tracks in the United States and we are fortunate enough to build, to bring one to Yuba City. Why do I even mention that? It's not because I have a business and I want you to come there and, and, or send your grandkids there. Of course, y'all can come. But it's what I learned through that process that's been helpful to me in how I first interact with the city, how I have interacted with the city and what business folks go through in an attempt to, to build and move a business forward, especially a project that takes a lot of reverse engineering and some of the other aspects that, that we had to go through. Also our interface with the city, making it more comfortable, making it more accessible and things like building permits, being able to apply for those online, not having to go down to city hall, not having to go to city hall to get one permit, the fire department to get another permit and over to the county to talk to the county. Everything needed to be joined together and that's something that we achieved about a year ago. So it's exciting to build a, to build a, put something together like that that will benefit future businesses and the current businesses within the city. I actually, not just as a council member, but one of my assigned duties, thanks to Stan, our mayor, because they get to make committee assignments, but I sit on the Sacramento, Sacramento Area Council of Governments as a director of one of the 31 directors down there that is the regional planning and transportation organization. Also sit on a subcommittee down there on the Government Relations and Public Affairs Committee. That's where we look at bills being introduced across the street from CACOG and we weigh in on those as, as directors and, and ultimately make recommendations to the entire board. Recently was appointed by CACOG to represent our region on the California COG. So that's the California Council of Governments. I'll be in a, in a meeting here coming up on Thursday down in Sacramento, but that's quite an honor to build a, to sit there because I am the voice for our region, not Sacramento or a, or represent, elective representative from Sacramento or another area, speaking on behalf of our region. It is Yuba City, Marysville, Sutter County, Yuba County, speaking on behalf of our communities. Also sit on the Sutter Animal Services Authority, which I think is one of the more remarkable and transforming processes that we've had recently. We took an old dilapidated dog pound to speak very politely of it and we have turned it into a resource for, for families, for our animals, the care of our animals, the level of care of our animals, when animals are picked up, how they're treated and when they're adopted out. We have adoption programs. I just spoke to an individual in Concord the other day who adopted an animal that came through or was entered into SASSA, our animal authority, and then transferred down to the barrier for adoption. And it was a black lab and the people are just absolutely in love with that, with that animal. Also sit on the, the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency. Y'all know about the levees. Working on those levees and staying in tune with that and I'm, I'm not going to speak a lot to it because I'll allow the mayor to speak to that, but, but the levy improvements were a key and still are a vital part of the safety of our community. Some of the projects we have moving forward, as y'all know or probably have heard, we're replacing the Fifth Street Bridge or, I'm sorry, the official name is the Twin Cities Memorial Bridge. That was last built following the 1955 flood. That bridge was destroyed, was replaced and we are putting in place of that two lane structure, a four lane bridge that will be a huge piece for our commuting and access to Yuba City from Marysville when their residents want to come over and spend a few of their expendable dollars in Yuba City. Marysville has threatened to put a toll booth on that bridge, but we won't allow them to.
We're in charge of that.
Yeah. But there's, there's a lot to that asset. If you'll notice, we have a four-phase project on Bridge Street itself. We completed one phase already and that's the, the four lane structure that was all beat up before out in front of Bridge Street School. So that, that's been finished. We'll be moving into the housing area where we've already purchased up all but, I think, two homes. And we'll be moving through that corridor when money is available. I can't promise that on any timeframe because we do have to fund that with about $9 million. Let me tell you a little bit about the bridge though. The bridge is a $70 million project locally, little bit less than $2 million coming from the taxpayers. It is funding that has come through the, through the federal government, through gas taxes and other things. And we were able to, to weigh in and get this thing funded in a way that California kept trying to push it off and push it off. And just recently, we were able to advance that back onto the timeframe that we're currently on. It'll break ground the 1st of July. Speaking of other bridge projects and, and I'm certain the mayor will probably speak to it, but just, I believe today, Friday, I don't know what day it was, AB 810, it passed through the assembly on a 77 to zero vote and that's to take the, the right away, the Cal Transit purchase on the south side of Yuba City. And basically, when that property sells, the plan was, Brown's plan, was just put that into the general fund coffers of the state of California. Well, AB 810 takes up money and sets it aside for a third bridge project that will link Lincoln Road into Earl Road over in Yuba County. So. One more hurdle to go. Well, a couple hurdles to go through over on the senate side, but it, we know it will get there. Talking about, if I just have a few seconds, talking about the, the flood, some of the things that, that occurred with the flood, there's been a lot of criticism and rightfully so of how evacuation occurred, how, how things happened with that, our communication with the public. There were a lot of, there's a lot of pieces and there's some, there's some anger. And I will tell you straight up, the communication was horrible. From DWR down, well, that, that was a lack of communication from them. But even from the state of California, OES, state OES, back to us and some of the things that transpired, there was a true breakdown in communication. Cal OES was overseeing the entire state at the time and they weren't overly focused on the Oroville incident. But with all of that said, during that process, we identified communication as one of the, of the failures. The fact that rumors were driving a tremendous amount of fear. Secondarily, it was also driving a, I guess to a degree, some conspiracy theories that were out there. And so not having all of the data, like inundation maps and things like that, we, as we were kind of walking through the process, one of the things that I thought of, and I've moved this project forward down at CACOG, is that we need a dynamic mapping system that helps prepare our community, the media and our first responders with all of the data that they need for preservation of, of life first and certainly to build an evacuated area safely given any scenario. And I don't mean that, that the mapping process that we'd like to build has just flood in it. It could be an earthquake, it could be any other natural disaster that's occurring. So we hope to be able to build that. Well, I was back in Washington DC, I met with members of Congress and their staff and we think we have a, a funding source through FEMA identified to build a, put this thing together as a model for the nation. It will come right out of, out of our area as a result of the Oroville Dam incident. With that, I'm starting to lose my voice because I'm at 11 minutes now and I figured Paul was going to shut me off.
No, no, not yet.
Okay.
In about 10 seconds though.
About 10 seconds, all right. But with that, thank you and I'll be happy to take any questions you may have on any other topic once Stan is done or the mayor's done.
Stan Cleveland, Yuba City Mayor.
Thank you for this opportunity again. You know, last time I came in, there were specific questions and it was quite soon after the, the incident at Oroville, but I do have an update on the city council report. They're back on the table, I think there's about 30 of them. I started this about six months after I came into, on the council and said, you know, the council members have a problem of being able to have accurate, updated information to be able to hand to people and we needed them to do that. At least the things that we can say, there's a lot of stuff that are in the works that we know about, but as soon as enough of it comes to be updated every quarter, I'd like to have one of these. And, and to my surprise, they were very pleased, staff was very pleased to do that and because it actually relieved them of always telling and having to update continuously, boom, we have it right here. So it actually has been a time-saving opportunity also for the city. There's copies back there, huge amount of things going on in the community. You know, I'm going to kind of, I started out to see, many years ago, to be an engineer. Prop 13 knocked all my certificates and licenses out because they were all beginning and when the state took over, they wiped out all those, my whole life plan right there. So I stayed in the restaurant business for 12, 14 years. That was in, I loved, I loved the people, love, you know, being able to see the smile on their face when, when they liked what, what was being served. Ended up owning restaurants, boy, was that a chore. Never again on that. But I've had little businesses off and on, Laundromat and Livebook, I owned that nine years. I've, grass never grew under my feet. I mean, if I didn't have a job and a volunteer and a business going and then my wife had a business at the same time, I mean, you meet yourself going and coming and going in two directions. For about 35 years, we did that. Then metal stud framing carpenter, learned how to, you know, build buildings, read blueprints, understand land use and why. The thing is, is all these things, you know, in our lives, we eventually hit your stride. Thing is, is all these things, you know, in our lives, we eventually hit your stride and you find out why you learned all this. And part of it was having to had, to be an employee, and then be an employer, and have a business, and then as, as John has said, his experience in trying to get a business established, he realized, wow, it's hard to get a business started in a town or a city. How can we fix that? He did his part and tried to make sure that was done, and, and they're still improving and having the attitude, how can we help you get what you need? And that's the attitude that is happening. So all these things came together. I was, my, my big thing that got me started in politics was the fact that they keep trying to do the levy repairs and getting those fixed and trying to do it the same way all the time and getting the same result. And then the fact that the pensions were spiraling out of control, and this is back in '06, never did I think I'd ever run for politics or in a position. So I ran, ended up winning, and ever since then, I've enjoyed the ride because I'm a solutions person, let's get together, find some solutions. I don't care if you're on the left, the right, the middle, and the upside down, you have something to say, but as long as you're civil and, and you're in there, you'll be able to become part of it. If you become not civil, it's like you're not invited to the next meeting, or, you know, either if you're there, you know, you better behave, you know, because you don't, we don't want, we don't want fights. And I, I don't like that at all. We want solutions. And so it's, it's worked. One of the main things when I first came on was people talking about jobs, 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 roads, 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 infrastructure and stuff like that. I'm an infrastructure person. I know that if we don't have good paths through and around a city and a town or whatever, you have gridlock, you have people always mad because of driving, this, bigger businesses won't come in because you don't have adequate transportation through and around a town. So you have to have good transportation corridors to get from one end of town to the other and, and in between and stuff. So that's what I focused on. When I, I was county supervisor for eight years, second district. Washington DC a bunch of times about the river and the levees, and got some of that taken care of. Well, at least I was privileged to be part of that solution. So beyond that, I, I just, I'm an infrastructure person. So, and I've always talking about, well, since we didn't have this big boom of building that we had, we thought we were going to have in the city, you know, we need to relook at everything that the plans they had in 2004 and figure out what, what, what didn't happen and then readjust. And we are starting to do that now. We're going to be coming out with some readjustments, significant readjustments to some of the fee structures. Now, how much the fees are, I'm not sure yet, that's the bean counters do that, but the structure and some of the things that are happening. When I first came in, I kept promoting, well, on infill development, the structure, the infrastructure's already there. Why are we making them pay the high price for putting in infrastructure when it's already been in there? They just need to have the connections. And so we were able to reduce many of the fees by 50% on infill development. You'll see some of the development around town that has occurred. I've noticed at some homes in some different areas, little lots that were empty, boy, they filled them in right away, right after that was done. I can't say that all of it was that, but it definitely was one of the components that has encouraged other companies to come in and build. In here, you'll find, somebody wants to pass a few around, you'll find a little map that literally has all the things that are actually going on, that we know for sure are going on or have been. There's a lot of more of those that will be coming out. I think within the six months, there will be a lot more to add to this. They're having actually even some areas tearing down old buildings and old retail and commercial to build new and modern. And so some of that is going to occur in, in our community from the developers. There's all kinds of road improvements. The reason this is kind of a lot on roads is because that's actually my focus. When next mayor comes in, they'll probably be slanted towards their focus a little bit And a lot of planning projects and different ways of approaches of that. Other than that, many of you already know what I believe and how I, why I do. Constitutional conservative. And, and I've never been afraid to say that. I was Tea Party before Tea Party actually was created. I got elected two years before on very similar platform when the Tea Party actually got established. So that's me, in a nutshell. And I didn't run out of breath or get hoarse. Actually, I do want to say that John Buckland has done a great job for us down in Sacramento, fighting for our ability to control our community. And the choice is here. That's why he's still there, is because he does a good job at that. And so, it, it's a hard, it's a hard thing to navigate. It's really bad down there. As he said, across the street, he's talking about the Capitol, from Secog's across the street, they don't listen to you. They really don't. And we have some good representatives there, and John has been very good for us the last six years. So, good job.
Okay, we are going to open it up now for questions. Thank you very much, Dan. And thank all four of you for your comments and everything. So if you would like to come up to any of the microphones and ask any questions of the, I was going to say candidates. At some point, they'll probably get it, it's a good, one of those kind of things. Anyway, we got our first question.
Good evening. I'm a Yuba City resident. Many years ago, when the first, when the, they first began talking, that I was aware of the...
It's on. You have to just tilt it down a little bit.
Tilt it down and it comes out there. Maybe that'll work. When they first began, as you said, in around 19, 19 whatever, the bypass of Marysville down onto Iger, not Iger.
It was called the Oak Road, Third Bridge.
Whatever it was called. There was a lot said, that we heard from businesses that are located on Highway 20 going through the towns, that people have said that if you put in that bypass, we won't go there, we will go somewhere else. People, some of the businesses that we heard had said that if that bypass went through, they were leaving the area. How do you handle that? Is that still a problem?
That problem does not exist at this time.
Thank you.
Any explanation as to why that problem doesn't exist at this time, just out of curiosity?
Third Bridge is dead in that area. And the one that we are going to be proposing actually has a lot of good in-town businesses connected to it. So, and it's, it'll be a more local use bridge rather than a regional.
So you did some advanced planning, in other words, and figured out where would be best to place the bridge?
Well, once we knew that the Third Bridge was going to kind of go away and stuff, I, I know before I was on the council, they'd actually started discussing it more, in more in depth. But then as soon as the decision was made by Third District Caltrans to sell the land, which is actually legislation they had to, by law, then, then we decided to, this year in fact, we had a meeting in January to ask what we can do with the funding and stuff, and then came up with the idea of asking Caltrans to see if there's a legislative way that we could keep that money. And while we were in there, I don't know, John, were you in there or not? Okay. They said, well, it has, this has been done once or twice before in this manner, we said, let's try to do it again. And we have a very good leadership in District 3 Caltrans right now that is, thinks our community is very important, all this area. So James Gallagher put a bill together, 810, and that funding will, when they sell it, stays in our community. Because usually it goes into the general fund back for Caltrans, but in its past, 77 to zero.
It gets involved with the Brown Act?
Huh?
The Brown Act.
No.
The other Brown.
This is something you can't talk about.
John, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, you know, in relation to businesses and, and the interaction with what would be put in at Lincoln Road, that bridge would be a, would be more defined as, and actually built by the local community, it'd be funded through the local community. It would not be a state highway project. And it ties more directly at Earl Road with some of the future plans that Beal has, and they're looking at the ingress, egress out of Beal Air Force Base. So some of the businesses that, that I've talked to are excited to be able to have an opportunity to have, instead of the bleed going south out of Beal every day, into Lincoln, Rockland, and Roseville, the LRR, they, they would be more encouraged to, to come back towards Yuba City.
A lot of people don't understand that obviously traffic flow is really important to these businesses. And, but I, but you did, did you do some surveys, or how did you get input from the business community that that was, be the best location, just out of, that's more of a functional thing, but it's something of interest?
So, the location, as it's selected, is through the general plan. So there was community input during that general plan update. There was input from the community, from the business community, and everyone else in, in that plan. I can tell you that should, should another location be more desirable, which I'm not sure that there would be one, that, that it could certainly be relocated to another location. There's been discussion of one north of Marysville and Yuba City, and, and that doesn't seem to be highly effective because that would be a complete bypass to Yuba City and not entering them into the, into the Yuba City corridors.
Thank you. Next question.
This is for Chris, okay, this is for Chris Pedego. You said, you said earlier that I'm going to be on your good side today, I might be on your bad side for a second or two. I'm going to put you on the spot.
Okay.
Okay. We were talking about earlier about freedoms, right? Okay, so when we voted in Marysville for the dispensaries not to come in, why is money overseeding voting?
Actually, Karen, the citizens of Marysville approved a business cannabis tax so that we could tax the dispensaries we approved, which you, you know I voted for. And so, the, the vote you're talking about, I want to make sure very clear, that was the measure A and B? Those were out in the county. The city of Marysville is an entity into itself, it does reside in the county, but the citizens of Marysville voted to allow us to tax those dispensaries, should they be approved. And I, I think the citizens themselves spoke, the regulation in the county, you're right, the people voted down. So I think in the city of Marysville, the residents said by that vote that they must have been okay with it because they want us to tax it.
That, that sort of, to me, is that we were forced into it. That's why we did the yes. There are a lot of people voted, I didn't go for it, but a lot of people voted for it because they were forced into it.
I don't think...
Because the city council did not listen to us.
I don't know that it characterized it as forced into it, it was put on the ballot and the citizens voted for it. And I'm not going to say they didn't, because they did, Karen, very honestly, they voted for it. I don't know that they were forced, we had public hearings on the dispensaries, many of which you attended and spoke, and respectfully so. And so I think, as we're working through the process, you well know, we are working through that process. And people will have the ability to voice their opinion. So I, I think that the use of marijuana outside in the county, those were totally separate issues, Karen.
Okay, are we going to have safety issues on that put in place because those dispensaries are at risk for violence?
Absolutely. They have, they have submitted plans to describe the security, the police departments have been involved in the process. They're going to do everything, we're going to do everything we can to ensure the safety of citizens, should those dispensaries be approved.
And mostly visitors. Okay, I have a comment for all of you guys.
Last comment, last comment.
What's that question?
No, last comment, let's go ahead.
Okay. I was just going to say, could you guys, as city officials, make it to where we know where the, if we have to be evacuated again, where to go to way ahead of time so we can make our plans and know where we're supposed to be going? Is there any way that we can know ahead of time all the, what is it called, the evacuation centers will be located?
You're, you're absolutely correct in asking that question. Can that be provided in advance? And all of the local jurisdictions are working on how the evacuations occur. Unfortunately, Red Cross in setting up evac centers, all of their resources went into Butte County, almost in, in their entirety, went to, to Butte County in this incident. What, what needs to happen is, again, I spoke about this design for some dynamic mapping to occur. Let me just give you a little sense of, of what that looks like. If an incident occurred at Oroville, we would have monitoring occur for inundation and real-time updates would be made regarding time and inundation depths. Second to that, there would be active monitoring of all of our state highway traffic flows, which are currently being done right now anyway. So we would be able to know with the load and what the timeframe to be able to get people out of a community to a safe point. Time and distance are our friend when it comes to flooding. So we would, we would be able to have that available. We want that to be dynamic, usable, the media to have access, for individuals to have access. And certainly, evac centers are not set up in advance of an incident because those evac centers could become useless or isolated, given any dynamic that may be occurring. So what it would be is if you're on the 113 corridor and you're headed towards Woodland, and Woodland was a safe place, the fairgrounds would be one of the locations that would be available. It took, yeah, in Woodland, it took over a day and a half for the fairgrounds down at, in Sacramento to become even activated. And part of that was a communication issue between the County of Sacramento Office of Emergency Services and Cal OES. So, so some of those kind of things happen, and when there's a lack of communication and the chain gets pulled at 4, I was in my business working at 425 when I got a phone call and said, hey, social media says we're pulling the plug and we're getting out of here. That's how, that's how the communication even came to me. So knowing where to go, you're, you're absolutely right, those routes, those booklets, everything need to have the resources within them to, to be able to provide you with, with good information, something that you can put in, in your vehicle and have accessible anytime you're traveling in, in our area.
I didn't know where any of the evacuation centers were. I headed towards Palooza and ended up down south, I mean, north, to a hotel because I didn't know where to go.
Stan?
Just a little bit more on that. I think it has now been established that all four jurisdictions, major ones, Yuba City, I think Marysville has theirs, Sutter County and Yuba County have their first release of some of the routes, some of the places where if you have a hard time getting out of town, that you can, you can meet, meeting places, there, that has just come out. We're trying to put it even to a better form to get it out to the citizens, toward they can have it, you know, quick access to on their own. So that is occurring, it's going to be, like you said, it's going to be a few more iterations of it and some changes, ask people to put input and ask questions, so there will be some changes to it, but it's going to be an ongoing thing. The fact is, is when they gave the emergency, the inundation map shows that Yuba City had eight hours to be, for concern. So far, that's... eight hours to be for concern. So far, that's what it is. Huh? No, I know that I'm-
Yeah, just let, go ahead and let him talk. And Ken, just let him talk. Go ahead. Go ahead, Stan.
Please don't do that to me.
Go ahead.
We were given, because of the type, it did not have the push behind it, the full flow. If it would have been the large, complete release, timeframe would have been much shorter. But...
Let me, is there another question on the other side? Bill? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just, I'm not gonna talk anymore.
Go ahead, Bill.
Watch out when it goes off.
Try again. No, I mean pushing the button or whatever.
On the side.
How's that? Can you hear me now? All you guys are deep into opium, and I don't mean the drug opium. I mean other people's money. It could be a drug. This is directed to the Marysville City Council. All the fictitious business license through the announcements, you can buy almost forty percent cheaper going through the territorial dispatch. Now, I know you may not like the territorial dispatch because territorial dispatch prints what the appeal Democrat won't. But don't you think being judicious with other people's money, that you should actually save the citizens forty percent?
There we go. I agree. I agree with you. And I think several of the council members agree. Did you say business? Were they, the public notices-
Fictitious business.
The public notices that we need to print. Yes, I agree. And I believe it was a council decision before I came onto the council that they directed the city manager to start using the most, the least expensive means of publishing those, and that that should have gone to the territorial dispatch. We just discovered recently that that hadn't been happening. So, I'm sure there's going to be some discussion about that coming up shortly.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm the one that led the fight to make sure we advertised in the territorial. I brought it to the council as an agenda item, and it was voted on. And yes, Councilwoman McKenzie is correct in that it just needs to be enforced. You are absolutely one hundred percent correct.
John?
Just a couple of comments about the third bridge, and we were talking about how long ago. I actually remember as a child, maybe I was six years old, we're talking sixty years ago, we were talking about a third bridge. It was gonna be there a Broadway over. So, you know, after sixty years, I've kind of given up hope. So, I'm hoping what you're saying is gonna actually turn out. And the other thing about the flood, and I know this is all a big touchy subject, but we found these same problems in the flood of ninety-seven. We were actually in the Arboga area about less than a mile from where it broke. Now, I was in Modesto, and I'm listening to the news report, and I'm calling my parents, and they're telling me that, oh, no, the local news is telling them everything's fine to stay there. But they left because I wouldn't quit bugging them. But I'm just telling you the opinion of the people, like in Olivehurst and Arboga and those areas, were that we knew that Marysville was a fishbowl, and that they were trying to get Marysville out before they were worrying about moving us all out. Now, I'm just telling you, that's an impression from the people that are out that direction. And in fifty-five, the only reason it didn't go before is because Beal Air Force Base, because it went in Yuba City, Beal Air Force Base was actually patrolling those levees to keep anybody from destroying them.
John, had a comment?
If I can answer a little bit about the ninety-seven evacuation. I was a police officer and present in the eighty-six levee break, and responded over for evacuation, and spent three days over in the Linda Olivehurst area as it was taking on water, and working to get individuals away from their homes, out of the trunks of their cars, off their roofs, and rescuing animals that were in risk of drowning. In ninety-seven, that was an incident that occurred quickly. That was a rapid incident that occurred over in the Linda area. In nineteen ninety-seven, early in the morning, my first phone call was at about seven-thirty in the morning, that DWR was anticipating uncontrolled releases over the emergency spillway. Thank goodness it didn't happen in eighty-six, and that we would have overtopping of the levees. Immediately, all of our planning went into progress within the city of Yuba City, and we started working on all of the evacuations. All of the agencies were meeting, all of the county administrators, and the city managers were all meeting and had formed up the plans to do a mass evacuation at the same time. For some unknown reason, the area you're speaking in of, out in the Arboga area, the county of Yuba County chose to leave people in place at that time. And Marysville was evacuated, Yuba City was evacuated, and we moved individuals to locations of safety, the closest being Sutter. And so, that had the planning component to it. So, you didn't see the mass chaos that was occurring in this case because I was one of the police officers driving up and down the road saying, be prepared to leave immediately. You need to be, you know, gone by four, four-thirty, five o'clock, as we hit different neighborhoods, moving them from levee first towards the further reaches out in Yuba City.
Microphone, microphone.
You're not talking about the Arboga area.
I'm telling you, for some unknown reason, they delayed that, they did not go with the established plan to evacuate at the same time that all of the other jurisdictions did, that proved to be an error that also caused fatalities.
Because the people that were in Arboga and actually working on filling that knew it. But nobody would listen to them because they were actually sandbagging. And my niece and nephew came, and they go, you guys have to get out because it's not gonna hold.
In nineteen ninety-seven, we potentially were going to have a break on the Yuba City side at Blackburn Tally area. That was a very soft area in the levee. We had underflow on that levee. And I actually walked on it, and the ground moved like jello. And we were very fortunate that that did not break there. There's nothing that could be done other than stand by and get the pressure off of it. No, there was no dynamite used over on the other side to do it. Levee failures are a, they're a catastrophic event, and there is no reason to leave people near them. Evacuations are the most important part of this. Public safety is.
You know why we all got paid off, right, for ninety-seven? We were paid in ninety-seven before the people in eighty-six were paid because the levee was undermined by a toll drain that the, what do you call the buildings, whatever they're called?
Right.
Army engineer-
Army Corps of Engineers.
Had undermined the levee. And that's the only reason we were paid off in a more timely fashion than anybody else because we took them for work.
The drains that you had on that side that failed were the same type of drains that we had on the Yuba City side at, almost, very, yeah, almost failed, are very, very similar.
Carla, did you have a question? And you're in the back? Okay. You could, okay. Joe?
I want to change direction just a little bit. I'm a little concerned about the broken window theory, and I believe that this kind of fits into the water management deal as well. But there's something that concerns people in Yuba City, and I suspect Marysville as well. That's two specific things regarding traffic. One is the unconscionable ignorance of noisy vehicles. Nobody is paying any attention, in my opinion, to what is becoming, and, you know, I'm losing my hearing, and the vehicles are getting louder. Something's wrong. I believe you ignore that little stuff, it leads to bigger stuff. The other one is, we sat at the George Washington twenty in Eastbound Left Turn Lane, waiting to turn onto the frontage. The light changed. Three vehicles ran the red light. That is endemic all over this city. I never see anybody getting a ticket. And I spend a lot of time not just driving, but walking around this town. I think that's a fundamental problem leading to bigger problems of all kinds. I simply don't see any enforcement.
I saw the same thing this morning happen on the way to City Hall, sitting at ninety-nine, getting to turn left onto twenty, toward the City Hall. And it was literally red for the turn lane, and the three cars just kept going. And I'm going, and the people had to wait for them to go through. So, that's a very big thing. I got a call again, actually it was this morning, from somebody that has complained about it before, and asked the question, what are we doing about that? Again, because it was brought up at a city council meeting. I know Mr. John Buckland has asked the police force to start focusing. I seconded that and enforced it. And we're going to, I know I'm gonna ask again because I was asked to talk about it. And that's, that is an extreme problem we're having in Yuba City now, everywhere. Even the stop signs, rolling through turns, everything. As far as the cars being noisy, I live across the street from Yuba City High School where the students park. You cannot believe what I hear now. This is the worst year that I've ever heard for loud mufflers, loud crazy stuff. This is the worst year I've heard since I've been living in that one house for fourteen years. So, I will be talking to the school district and saying that, you know, it's your responsibility to make sure that the students are driving cars to your property and parking on yours, that they comply with the laws of the land. So, and I'm gonna try to at least push that. John may have a little more to say.
Can I ask you a question? Is, and this is regards to the school and where you live. Did the Yuba City Unified School District just drop their auto shop course over there this year? Just out of curiosity.
I am not sure whether they have dropped it, but they took, all those buildings are completely renovating them. I'm not sure what classes they're putting back in there or anything, but they literally ripped them down to the shell and putting all new heating and air systems, new, I mean, it's completely brand new inside door. So, I don't know.
I asked that question because I did drive by there two days ago.
Yeah.
And being a superintendent, I know what the MO is. It looks like they've stopped those classes, gutted those rooms, and now they're making them into like art classrooms or decoration rooms or something.
I have no idea on that.
So, shop class, that's, and what, the reason why that, the cursory evidence about the loud mufflers and all that stuff with kids, if they had an auto shop around, the auto shop teacher explains that to them, why they shouldn't be doing that, just to let you know.
So, the best answer to that one, we go to the Yuba City School District meeting and be direct with them. So, some of you out here, find out when that will be, and go start asking about. That would be the fastest way to get some change.
And I'll be really brief. I truly appreciate the question, especially on the broken window theory and how vehicles are, or violations, small violations amount to greater incidents, and it just continually and perpetually gets worse. I spent a large amount of my career as a police officer in traffic or running the traffic division. I'm the guy that brought a grant program to Yuba City that brought motorcycles. I had, I was blessed that the taxpayers backed that, and I got to ride a Harley-Davidson for a living. So, it was great. But I'll tell you, what makes it great is every enforcement stop is the opportunity to correct a wrong. Whether or not a ticket is written, or it's just simply an encounter, that's, sometimes it's the very first encounter that any individual has with a city. So, it's an opportunity to start setting the precedent early with individuals. And enforcement leads, small enforcement, a loud muffler, a car that doesn't have tags on it, a car that's speeding through a neighborhood, every one of those are potentially being operated by someone that is not, just besides the infraction, may be wanted by the law for other crimes. While I worked traffic, we arrested individuals all the way from small petty crimes all the way up to murder out of traffic stops. That's what you get by doing enforcement. Again, the red light running thing, the U-turns, ten feet away from an intersection, I'm perplexed. I watched a cop car do it the other day. And it's no wonder. I don't think that they've cracked open the California Vehicle Code that has about forty-eight thousand delineated sections in it, that they can pick the top ten and stop anybody in Yuba City for. And that includes me.
And John, I'm gonna have to interrupt you because-
Sure.
We gotta move on. Do we have any, you wanna make any comments, Chris or Stephanie, about Marysville in this regard? Press the button.
I haven't been hearing complaints about that necessarily, although from time to time, I, from my downtown apartment, I hear loud mufflers as well. So, I don't know if the police department has been receiving complaints on that. Do you know, Chris? Generally, enforcement is something that we are wanting to happen regularly so that people do know what our expectation is for the city. And so, we will be encouraging that.
I think the biggest thing I see mostly as I travel, I take my niece back and forth to school, is the blocking of red lights. And I think it's something that we should really enforce in our city. And I know we took down the very unpopular red light cameras, which I supported taking them down. It's just a, it's just an enforcement. We need to get more policemen on the street to enforce all of the little things. Maybe it's like John says, it's an education process. Educate the citizen or the motorist who's traveling through our city that some things are okay and others aren't. And it's just, it's just slowly working through the process of making traffic better and just educating our citizens.
Jenny? Real close to the microphone.
Regarding the red light runners, I really complain that I have seen sitting at an intersection where I'm first in line at the red, at the light, waiting for the change. I have counted, going across from right to left as I'm looking at it, I counted anywhere from three to six cars or vehicles going through that light. However, recently, I was sitting at Clark and I wait, yeah, going through town, I counted three vehicles going through long after that light had turned red from then. But you know what was sitting at right in front of the line on that direction? A cop car. And he didn't move a hair. So, what do you do about that? That happens all- That happens all too often.
We, we did answer that, uh, previously, and the mayor, um, expressed how the city council has reached out to our chief of police to, uh, increase the enforcement in Yuba City, uh, of traffic violations, so, and it's not about the revenue, folks. This is, this is about just making our streets safer. When we can reduce injury accidents, injury collisions within a city, your insurance rates are somewhat affected regionally by that. The lower we can get them, the, the better off it is, and certainly, you don't want to be involved in a motor vehicle crash today, because it's not just the impact it's gonna get you. Anything above about fifteen miles an hour, you're gonna get the second smack, and it's gonna be in the face, and it's called an airbag. So you get, there's multiple injuries that, that come out of these things, so, um, we want our streets to be safe, we work for those, and we, we are pushing our law enforcement to do just that.
This is the last one, Jenny, because we got other people.
My comment and my complaint is the fact that the police sit and look at those red light runners, and they do not move a hair, they just let them go right on, where they had the opportunity to go after at least the last one.
Thank you. Bill, did you have a question, you sat down? Bill was first, yep, Bill was first. Bill was first. Thank you, Bill.
Question from Carla, uh, are the budgets online?
The what?
The city budgets, are they online?
Budgets.
Proposed budgets should be online, because it's gonna be, uh, discussed again, so it's online.
Ours will be going up online, absolutely.
Uh, Tom?
I know things are getting bad, uh, I had an incident today in front of the Clark Street Fire Department.
Speak in the microphone, yeah.
In front of the Clark, uh, Fire Department, but I used to run, uh, shuttle for Microsoft, and I had a gentleman from India, and he was literally astounded that people took their turns at a stop sign. So it's, it's getting bad, but believe me, it's bad all over the world, ten times worse.
Robert?
Next? Go ahead.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, stay close.
Thank you. I'm, uh, Robert Miller, I live in Gridley, uh, Buick County, and my address was, I wish that the Live Oak, uh, Roseanne was here tonight. Um, I would just wanna share with you, uh, that, um, I live in an area in Gridley where, where transportation, okay, this might sound a little off-wall, but I like, sad to see, and I brought this up e- even at the, the Gridley Council Meeting, and Buick County, you know, two advisors. Buick County has a B-line transit, and Yuba Sutter has a bus that goes to Live Oak. And you have two cities, Gridley and Live Oak, are only five miles from each other. And there's no, there's no public transportation in between Gridley and Live Oak. But they had one many years ago, I mean, before my time, when Trailways had a Gibson bus that ran from Redding to Sacramento every hour on the hour. And that would go right through Gridley, Chico, I mean, on down, I just wanna address all to you guys. And I'd just like to know who, is this the county level I could talk to, or somebody I could talk to from Yuba Sutter Transit, maybe they can get there? I, I saw on the website one time, and they were talking about maybe running a bus to Gridley. And I would say, my opinion is that they, if they ran a bus from Chico to Yuba City, or, you know, vice versa, I think you'd get a lot of people off the, you know, we have less cars on the road, and that's the problem is, because in our, up in our area, the county and the city is like, what's mine is mine, what's yours is yours. Same thing with, with Buick County, Sutter County, Yuba County, what's mine is mine, what's yours is yours. And so, it's just sad to see, and I see in Yuba Sutter Transit, they run to Sacramento, they go to Wheatland, I don't know if they run to Lincoln, but I'm just saying this for our area, I mean, it's just sad to see, our area up there, and Gridley, Buick County, even, even the transportation, I, even through Gridley now, it's getting really bad now, because even Highway 99, even, we get, we get all the Chico and Sacramento and Yuba City traffic going through there, and I could tell you one thing, it's just, I don't know if there'll ever be a, um, what do you say, a, um, will there be a solution?
Thank you.
So we all take, uh, turns sitting on different, uh, boards and commissions, and one of those is the Yuba Sutter Transit Authority. And this discussion is, is not new, as to how to link up, um, all of our North State, especially Buick County, bringing Chico, even students from Chico, uh, down into, uh, our area for, uh, transportation home and, either way. So, so that discussion is, has been had. I think it, at the Yuba Sutter Transit, uh, component to this, and, uh, for Buick County, it comes to funding dollars, but there's a glimmer of hope out on the horizon. Both Marysville and Yuba City are, are currently engaged in, in early conversations with the San Joaquin Joint Rail Authority. What they would like to do is, is establish a commuter route through our, our community or into our community. Initially, it would be an Amtrak that would be running the, the valley. Um, they're going to be jointly using Freight Line to be able to get into, into Marysville, but they want to establish an Amtrak, uh, bus system down the Highway 99 corridor, first from Chico into Marysville for the link-up on a commuter route, but then secondarily, moving all the way up into Redding and, and our North State. This isn't part of the high-speed, uh, project that, that, yeah. This, this absolutely has to do with the Amtrak services. The third most utilized Amtrak service in the United States is the, the Metro Corridor into the Bay Area, and they want to be able to link that up, and, and also allow, um, individuals out of Chico to be able to, to get into Sacramento, that make it more of a route. So that bus, that bus line would run into, um, through Gridley, into Live Oak, to Yuba City, and over to Marysville. It's like having two cousins that never talk to one another.
Not only that, it, it has to do with the funding between, uh, whether they're gonna commit any funding towards that, when there's so many other things that are, um, by the community considered to be of a higher level, uh, concern. So that's, it's the votes to get it, to get the money, uh, allocated in that direction.
Johnny, did you have a question?
Yeah, my question is for the Marysville City Council lady. What is the future of our Third World Country Campground by the mission?
Could we have a clarifier on that?
Yes. What are we planning to do? I'm not sure what the plans are for that, except that I did hear, uh, through John Nicoletti a couple of weeks ago, that they, since there is, the Habitat for Humanity is building a new, um, facility near the Buick's Christian Manor, they are hoping, there must be talks with the county and with the homeless consortium of some sort of abandoning 14 Forward. I'm not positive, so don't, don't, uh, make any plans on this, but he, what he said to me sounded as if that they were going to somewhat abandon that project, allow the rescue mission to take over any of that operation that they wanted to or not, but just leave it to them, and then whatever the county was doing would then go to the, um, Habitat for Humanity operation. So I don't, I haven't talked to Robert Bendorf, so I'm not sure, um, if that is an absolute plan. Um, I haven't talked to Roger at the Rescue Mission, so I'm not sure about the details of that, but I know there's some talks about that not functioning as it is in the future.
Larry, Mertz?
I live in the northern part of Yuba City, and, uh, Peas Road is the northernmost limit of Yuba City, the boundary of the city limits. There is a lot of traffic in that part of the city that is so developed up, and it's always going through Queens Avenue, that's a big bottleneck for traffic. And all the streets, and all the side streets, are always conveying the traffic for the northern part of the city. What is the possibility of putting an overpass on Peas Road?
You're talking, actually, there is an overpass, but there's not, uh, highway access. That's the, um, that is one of our dilemmas, since some of the funding that many years ago was put towards it, was utilized in a different area of the city. Of course, it has to be made good eventually. Um, we are discu- in discussions, um, with Caltrans on a path to make that happen sooner rather than later. There's a couple of projects we're working on, one of them, a strong one is trying to get an overpass at Highway 99 and 20, eliminating the red light running that goes on there by having a, a true overpass there. There's plenty of room. It's all owned, it's all owned by Caltrans, there's a huge, many, many acres that is owned by there. They're just leasing the land out to other businesses. So it's on, no, it's okay. So they have, they have enough land to do it, except for a couple slivers, in a couple spots, um, so that is in process. Their original proposal was to discuss it in nineteen, I mean, in 2035, to just that.
Wonderful.
To discuss it. We got it moved up to 2015, 16, and 17. So the discussion is, is going on for, uh, and it would be, um, it would really help the transportation and business in this community. Take a lot of dead land that is not being utilized well in that area, and being able to develop it into, uh, useful businesses, uh, and locations there, so that is going on. But the other one, Peas Road, is being discussed also, and we're trying to find ways to make that happen. Developer impact fees will be a, a component of that as it grows north again a little bit, if it does, and fills in those areas. There's many factors involved in that, but it is definitely our desire to get something in there as soon as we can.
Bill, you have a question on the other side?
Yeah, a social question, is my understanding that during the evacuation, in that timeframe, that, uh, some of the more aggressive officers in Yuba City were writing tickets to some of the homeless on county property. I wonder if that's been addressed?
That's news to me.
What, I believe, if, if you're talking down at Whittaker Hall, the
Oh, yeah?
what was on, going on down there? There were no citations written. That's not even, Whittaker Hall, um, where it sits is county land, so our police officers, our city police officers would not have been the ones doing, uh, any enforcement there. There were discussions with the homeless, um, along that, their reach as they came over the levee and started setting up back behind businesses, um, as to how they could get access in and out on a temporary basis, and that was provided, uh, for them. And at one time, uh, as I walked through there and, and talked to individuals, uh, there were a little over seventy individual camps set up through there. Uh, so, so a lot of the, of the efforts, um, to, to help them kind of relocate, and then Sutter County stepped up their program, and started putting individuals in, into hotel, uh, accommodations. Uh, all of these are responses to our, our homeless conditions in our community, and, uh, there are efforts that continue, and there will be a development of a, uh, joint powers authority on homelessness coming up. It's not gonna be an extra layer of government, because I've insisted it not be a layer of government, that it'd be a conduit to build a, to address, uh, the resources that are required.
Thank you, thank you very much, and, um,
He, he's, um, the specialist on homeless is why, he's assigned to that, he'll, he'll know more about it than, than any of us will.
Anybody in Marysville wanna comment on that? Make any comments about the homeless and how it was handled? Anybody else? Okay. Um, okay, let's, uh, a couple of things, I'm gonna shift gears here, because we're basically done with the questioning part, and, except for my questions. No, it's not gonna be that bad. But, but some real, real concerns, first of all, I wanna ask you guys the question, have you heard, um, Sheriff Corey Honas, or Honay's, report? Honay, thank you, I, you know, here's, but have you heard his report, uh, that he's been making publicly about the events of February 12th, the evening of February 12th? Have you heard him, personally heard him make the presentations? Okay. I have a recording on my website, I went and saw him speak, and his beautiful wife, who works there with him, and, uh, you need, whatever, before you start really getting into the planning, you need to listen to that. And then you walk away with your own conclusions about the events that night, because it's very, very important, you hear what he has to say, and we all need to hear what he has to say. And by the way, when you get done listening to him, you're gonna realize what a real hero he is. But, be, for planning and everything. Which brings me to the other thing, uh, planning for infrastructure. I was approached by a group of people, uh, to start running a commercial about, uh, Orville spillways and community meetings. And this is a petition whose objective is to provide opportunities in middle, middle, in, um, multiple locations for members of the public to learn about the response and recovery effort. It's also, um, a petition that's out there that is designed to figure out how we're going to best deal and promote infrastructure building for exit response. So when we have this type of situation, again, people will not be trapped on the roads. Are you familiar with that petition process yet? Okay, well, that's going on, and, uh, there's commercials that are running right now, there's a website, uh, I think it's called recoveryroads dot, or recovery, yeah, recoverysystem.org, and, um, you can get a link to that and sign the petition, and they're gonna try and put pressure on Governor Brown and others to try and get some money for, uh, the infrastructure recovery, and also to promote the, the programs out there. Okay, I just do need to ask this about the dam, uh, what, where are you at in each of your respective cities with the evacuation plan for each one of your communities, and what's the timeframe?
Darren? We have somebody here that's more up to date on it?
So the city has created evacuation maps, uh, similar to what Shutter and Honay has done in Buick County, we call it his effort, and, uh, to systematically evacuate our community by sections where there's been, uh, locations. And, uh, but once again, if UWR gives us a no-notice evacuation, we'll be in similar situations, but, uh, we, we have maps, they're up on our website, www.yubacity/flood, and you can see there is a map for the city.
Let me, let me, um, let me interject this now in the conversation, because I can, and it is, right now I can do that. We need to have a command system to follow from the dam on down, and that's why you need to listen to that conversation, okay? Because it, it really is the person, a constitutional sheriff, who saved every life in here that night. And he walked through a process, and it's so evident, as a leader like myself, I used to do emergency evacuation plans for schools and school districts, I get all this. You need a massive early warning system, and I say that, I've gone up to the dam nineteen times since the event. And you know what they have now? It's really kind of interesting. Sirens, right? They've got sirens up there, and where did they hear the word sirens? Community meetings. And why did we take, and one of the questions that came up with the sheriff, he asked the question, where did all the sirens go? Used to have sirens on fire departments, used to have early warning sirens all over the place. There was not a one single siren available in any community period end of subject. Now you go up there, the blasting- Now you go up there, the blasting. So you bet they've got sirens to warn people. But he was wondering that himself. And you'll hear that in the conversation. Yes, sir? Oh, no. Why'd we do that?
It's got to be recorded.
It's got to be recorded, okay?
Just one thing. Number one, DWR has not talked to the city of Yuba City to this day. We have asked in writing multiple times. Our city council, they finally responded. I told them to call anytime, 24 hours a day, any day of the week. Of course, they called me very late on a Saturday and they thought I wanted to answer my cell phone. So I was able to finally provide an opportunity for our city council to take a site visit, as they call it, to the dam, hopefully in two weeks. Hopefully that, that will work out. We love the sheriff up in Buick County. His jurisdiction is Buick County.
Right.
And, and we want them to include us in the conversations and it's been requested by our city council in writing multiple times and we're still waiting for response. And we agree with you, Paul. We, there's that command structure that we have in place. Right now, our, our issue, we hear the information as you do, in the news and on the radio.
No, you don't hear it like I do.
Well, maybe not like you do. But from DWR, we're not hearing it. And I would say the sirens is an issue that the city's been brought up. I do know that, that the dam has always had sirens because they...
For release.
Down them when they're released. So they're using existing sirens for that. And obviously, it's one of the things that, that we continue to look at, we're working cooperatively. But as, when I was answering your question, it was very specific to the map. But everything you've said, Paul, it's something that we have worked on. We have a plan in place, but one of the missing keys...
Right.
Is if, if something happens at Oroville Dam, as it is right now, we're probably going to hear about it in the news media.
Okay, and again, because of what you just told me and told this audience, it's real, I don't care what you do tonight, you go watch that YouTube and listen to Corey and you'll get it. Because it is an outrage, and I'm going to express it, and I'm sure you're just as outraged, I'll just express the outrage. It's an outrage the DWR has done nothing. Absolutely nothing. And I mean, I get nothing from them except I get threats. But that's okay. I know, you know, I know like they say, when you're, you know, back in World War II when planes were over the target, they started getting a lot of flak. And that is very true. But I, you know, if we can put in sirens, if we can break it down, because when you hear what happened with Honay, you'll get it right away, that we have to have that downstream information and it's not going to be the DWR. It is not going to be the DWR, trust me. That'll make a lot of sense once you listen to it. Bill?
Yeah, just a...
What's that? Well, let's see what happens in a week.
One, one thing, one question I failed to ask is why are our First Amendment rights being obligated in Yuba City when we have to go beg for a permit to assemble and protest?
Assembly permits are required when the, when the crowd gets to certain levels. The reason that you, that you do that is the staffing for police, the staffing for police has to, they have to be notified somehow that, that an event is going to occur. Also, you have to also notice that the, that the contra comments or an opposing side also has the opportunity to be on site. Go to Portland. Take a, take a look at that one.
But we were told that for one person to carry a sign, I need a million dollars worth of liability insurance and a permit approved by the police department. Now, that's bull. That's a bunch of crap. We've done it for years and somebody turned us in this last time, so we went and got a permit. And fortunately enough, we have an insurer who would insure us. But there were like 10, 12 of us?
Okay, let's go ahead and get to the, go ahead with the answer. If you have an answer, yeah.
And, and let me just...
What's the limit? Down to one people, no people, 20 people?
I, I will get back to you on it, Larry, because what they're enforcing is not my understanding of, of what all of the court decisions have been in the state of California for what is an assembly and what is a, you know, basically persons, one person is not an assembly of people. You know? So, so let me get back to you on what that enforcement standard is and then, and then...
But it's listed under a parade. And then when you look at the permit you fill out, you, you have to put down the vehicles you're going to have and what kind of order and how many. It, it doesn't even apply to what we're doing.
Right. Yeah, it, it would seem to be a, a good point for us to look at and, and see what we can do and direct some policy on that.
Can I also add that it's part of the First Amendment of the Constitution that people have the right to peacefully assemble?
Yeah, he already did that. That was already done.
Did he do that? I missed that?
No, Bill did. Okay, I've got another thing and this relates to Dear Leader Jerry Brown. The, the May revise and how is that going to affect each one of your communities? Are you familiar with what's going to be happening to your community yet? Have you guys gone through that with your staffs? So, Marysville first. The May revise, the governor's budget? You go through the May revise and he comes out with his revisions and stuff like that? Are you, are you... Well, I'm getting to that. I know the May revise goes. But are you, are you familiar with what, I guess, let me put it, do you realize what has happened to the funds that's not coming to you now this year because of the governor's May revise? Have you gotten that word yet? Just talking to the microphone.
Yeah, the SB 1, I know our funds are reduced from that already, from the projected ones. I know about that.
You guys know what SB 1 is?
It's a road tax.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the, the what tax is it? Road tax?
Yeah.
Jerry Brown's personal car tax?
Right, something else.
Slush fund? Wherever the money's supposed to go, it's not going there. What about Yuba City? What are you guys aware of so far?
You're being a little... You're not really giving us a little bit more. We've heard different things about fundings and...
We've heard multiple, just light discussions on things are going to be changed and not come, but we haven't heard, had any specifics yet.
You're being cut some more.
But we know that.
Yeah, okay.
We do know that. That, that part we know, but exactly where has not been defined to us yet.
And, go ahead, John.
The infamous Jerry Brown, the other Brown Act, when he ran, said that he was going to return control to local jurisdictions. That was code for, we are going to take your funds and do with what Jerry wants to do with them because he needs to leave a legacy behind that, that his father was unable to accomplish in its totality. So, so we're aware, our budget reviews constantly. It's, it's a living document. Our, our budget is a living document and we will continue to make revisions as, as the cuts come. We already have shortfalls in, in a lot of areas.
And let me, let me stop you there for a second, John. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to call off the dog, so to speak here. And I know it's a lot more fun the other way. I, listen, I get it. I talk about this five, you know, 15 hours a week. But, you know, in all reality, it's not their fault in this stuff. It's Jerry Brown's fault. And that's, you know, I'm, does it sound like I'm trying to focus attention to Jerry Brown? I don't know why I'd do that. I mean, this is, I gotta, I just, I'll be blunt because I can be, it's like on the radio show. This is criminal behavior. It's, I didn't see anybody disagreeing or shaking their head over here. But I'm not going, I'm not supposed to point that out, but it verges on it. It's pretty clear that, now, this is where it really gets dicey. Let's talk about JeriCare. The $400 billion per year increase in our budget. Isn't that right? Okay, I'm sorry. Everybody standing up and cheering about that? What's the budget now? It's 123 billion per year. We just got ushered into the new era of single payer by Jerry Brown. We did. You didn't even know it, did you? $400 billion to be added on to the 123 billion. You guys have any comments about that? Did I take the air out of you?
I had a short discussion with a friend when that passed and we were both just breathless. We cannot compute that. It does not, it doesn't compute.
Right.
Really, it doesn't. There is, there is no way to rationalize, reason it, even really discuss it because it just doesn't work.
Right. And no, the, you know, Obamacare is being led to failure right now just on its own weight. It's just all sinking. The exchanges are all closing down and of course, all the healthcare companies are bailing. I think they're down to one now. And so Trump's position is, you know, he's a businessman, let it fail, you know? So that's what's, that's what's really, that's the best thing to happen. The other concern I have is are you aware that Jerry Brown has now turned to your checking account monies in the cities and states to balance the budgets? Are you aware of that? He's worked that out with the state treasurer, Jimmy Chen? Are you aware of that?
Let, let me put it this way. He's doing it to businesses too. They're, they're tapping, they're tapping into business accounts when the state of California fails to, to pay their bill or to continue to pay their bill to the feds on a loan. Then the feds turn right, right around and have the opportunity and it's legal for them to do it is to tap that money on a five-day notice out of your business account.
Right. And now this occurred, this is occurring because you have an account similar to what Bob Citron down in Orange County had, a county exchange of money where you can pull your money and your resources and stuff. And Bob Citron was using that money to arbitrage it. Jerry Brown and the treasurer have just decided to do that with the cash that is in the, what's available to the state through all these different resources, $79 billion. And that's going to lead to a bankruptcy of the state, of course. That's exactly what happened in Orange County. That's how Chris Streton and I got together because it was Chris Streton who figured that one out.
You know, and Paul, some of the things that we look at on a continual basis is the squeeze that's being put on a city like Yuba City. We're blessed in the fact that, that we've done a fairly decent job, I'm not going to say an excellent job, of being the fiduciary stewards of the taxpayers' money. But we do a pretty exceptional job of, of looking at how can we get through the process, whether it was a downturn in the economy and the state of California, Jerry Brown coming on wanting more money, giving local control to us and, and all of his fancy words. As, as we've made those steps, we're also being squeezed from other directions. And the single payer situation, I was in a, we were in a budget hearing the other day and exactly what I said when we got to that line item in the budget was wait until Jerry gets his way. When he gets that, we're going to take one more, one more haircut on the, on the financial side.
Are you talking about with the SB 1 money that he's already gotten his hands on and the committees have already devied up the money going not to roads, but to other little programs? That's the way it's being allocated right now. As we speak, that's going through committees.
Well, I mean, SB 1, down, the fight, the fight in Sacramento was, was fairly minimal even though it took them about two years to be able to get SB 1 through because it went into special session down there and everything else. But there's, there's so much to that that was given up. And, and the pot raiding that will occur through that process is, is the design instrument of somebody like Jerry Brown.
Right. Pot, P-O-T, raiding, as in money pot and raiding it. That's what he referred to as.
That's, no, yeah.
And I want to follow up on that because there is now a petition by a Huntington Beach Assembly member that we, they already started signing up people. They actually hired a company to go all around California. I saw, I think they were over at Bel Air, one of them was the other day. And I saw another one around town. If you see them sign it and it's a petition to, to take back or it's going to get, trying to get it to be a proposition to roll back SB 1. I got to get on with the questions.
And you're talking about Travis Allen's?
Yes, Travis Allen.
Anybody that, that can reach out to Travis Allen? He is a, a huge, you think Southern California liberal? This guy is rock solid and, and certainly is a steward of our money.
And, okay, we'll get to second Ricky, but he, he gave me, I was triggered. Then the triggering was the, what we're seeing right now is you're seeing actual liberals being hammered at home about their decision about SB 1. And so that's why they're coming out now in opposition to it. And so that, my God, it's politics sweeping California, get rid of Jerry Brown or polarizing. Yes, sir?
This is mainly for Chris, I think. I sat up, I sat here and I listened to a lot of things about safety and about beautiful Marysville. And then you said that you support the cannabis sales, the cannabis houses or whatever you're going to call them. And I guess that they need a whole lot of security. Where's that policing going to come from? Who's going to fund it? And how does that help beautify anything?
They will be funding for security.
They're going to have their own security.
They're going to have their own security.
Vetted by who? Vetted by them?
Vetted by the police department. It's, they proposed their security plans and they've been vetted by the police department.
And you actually think that cannabis sales in Marysville helps the beautifying of that city?
I think the revenue that comes from them will, will help.
That's, that's a sad thing to say, that we have gotten to the point that we have misappropriated our money so bad that we have got to legalize drugs. That's sad.
Okay, Ricky. Microphone.
Two things. First of all, I did listen to Sheriff Honay's speech twice. It's too bad I couldn't get a mic closer to him instead of listening to all the dishes crashing. But very informative. And I tell you what, that, that guy, you know, he, he went through a lot of battles. And it's, everybody got to take advantage of what Paul's talking about because it was really good. And the second thing is for, for Marysville city council people, for all they care. But you realize that if, you know, when, when the sales tax initiative was put out there, everybody would say, oh, it's just for things that are bought in Marysville, right? It's not so. You buy something online, that count, you get taxed at eight and a half percent. Eight, eight and a quarter, whatever it is, eight. You get taxed at that for whatever you buy. And it's not, I mean, you could buy, you know, about a, you know, $2,400 TV and I got taxed at the eight and a half percent, which it normally would have been, you know, seven and a quarter. Do you guys realize that? You guys know that? That's, that's unlawful and unethical. When it was put out there in the campaign, Chris, Stephanie were on the board, our council. Chris, you were, and I brought it up to you at the, you know, when it first came out because I first made a sale and it was going to cost me almost 10% because they taxed that 101% on what I was buying. That, that's, you should make that adjustment with the state. We should not be paying sales tax and additional sales tax for stuff that was bought in New York to, because my mailing address of the credit card I use is 95901. When it starts asking you on there, you live in Linda, is this from Arboga or is it from Holbers or is it from the city of Marysville? If you check the city of Marysville, you get ding that extra 1%. And a lot of people don't know that. And that, that's just totally wrong. And that should be, that should be addressed, so.
Look, I ab...
Oh, yeah, with a car, I mean, cars, that's sad, cars have always been that way.
Okay.
That was, I wanted to bring that up to, to you guys, but, and I don't know if anybody else is aware of it.
You have to use the microphone because we can't hear you if you give a comment.
It was just, it was just campaigned for the safety so we could have more police and fire protection and, and help things out for things that were bought in the city.
Right, right.
One of the people set up there that never comes to these things that sits right across from Stephanie says, says that we, we lost so much money from the sales tax of gasoline because the gas price went... the gas price went down, so we gotta raise it up.
Yeah, you know what? It's gonna go up 30 cents per gallon now.
Yes, yes.
So, I mean, did you know that? That's SB 1.
But anyway, I wish you would check into that, because it's wrong for anybody that buys things online. If you're an elderly person on a fixed income and you get stuff out of state for your medical needs, you're getting dinged that extra 1%, which adds up.
And I absolutely will look into it and get back to you.
Thank you. Well, listen, I'd like to thank all of you for being here. You have 30 seconds to say a few words, if you'd like, and then we'll start down here at this end with my main man here. Stan Cleveland.
Thank you for this opportunity. It's a little bit different setting than in the past. We didn't address one item that I actually prepared for, was 54, and definitely do not like.
Right. You want to just go ahead and take a second?
Well, I had the copies of it actually here. This bill limits the state local law enforcement agencies' involvement in immigration enforcement and ensures...
Sanctuary cities.
Yes, and ensures that eligible individuals are able to seek services from and engage with state agencies without regard to their immigration status. In other words, criminals could, illegals with our criminals cannot be, the illegality could not be considered in any way.
How many of you have heard of nullification? What they're trying to do, this is Jerry Brown, Kevin DeLeon, and Renan, they're deliberately trying to nullify the Constitution regarding illegal aliens. The last time this happened, and there was an attempt to do this, was 1860, with South Carolina breaking away from the Union. They're trying, they're trying like crazy. Is it in your book, in your pamphlet tonight?
Basically, they're saying citizen does not matter. Citizenship does not matter.
They're trying to dilute that.
I've been involved in naturalization ceremonies for a long time and doing it right in this community through our government, instrumental in getting the naturalization ceremonies actually done in Yuba City, Sutter County, and in Marysville as a relief valve from the state Capitol. And this is an affront, it's an insult, it's actually slapping any of these people all these years, they're slapping them in the face for becoming citizens.
You're seeing the mechanisms at play of the totalitarian work out of California right now, and this is what we've been warning you about. And this came up here the other day, and now the other one that's to tie into this, and I wanna jump on this. Chris Street just wrote an article that I think it's on Breitbart yet, right now, he and I talked extensively about it, and he's writing about it. But it looks like he's suggesting in his article that for the first time in our country's history, that a sitting governor be charged with a Logan Act violation. And what that means is this, is that he is running around literally creating treaties from, as a state governor, with other countries. And you can remember that Katie Grimes was the first one who outed the governor on this, and it ultimately led to the resignation of the governor up in Oregon, her article. So they're, keep in mind, Chris Street is no slouch, since he talks every other day to a guy by the name of Jeff Sessions. Don't you hate it when a planet... Anyway, that's a little bit too much knowledge maybe, but go ahead, John.
So the California Values Act, another way to try to sell something to us all, that's SB 54. So when you start hearing that being pushed out there, there's a lot of different names for it, but that's what they've tried to entitle this. Hey, look, as a police officer for 32 years, I booked a little over 1,000 individuals for 8 USC 1394. What that was, that's a legal hold, under the federal law, for someone has entered our country illegally, and you are holding them for immigration to ship them back to their country of origin. I am not ashamed of the over 1,000 people that I sent back to their home countries. I'm very proud of that fact, and we need to continue to enforce our borders.
Chris?
I oppose as well. It's just not, it's not good common sense, and it's not enforcing the laws of our country. And I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak.
And yes, thank you for having us here tonight. It's been wonderful to see you all again and hear your concerns, and for me, you know, I'm there with you. We're there with you. We're paying those taxes in Marysville as well, and dealing with all of those things that are, just really affect our daily lives, even the thing that I was thinking of earlier that I forgot was a vagrancy issue in downtown and homeless camps popping up again. And so that's, again, an enforcement issue that we are in discussions with the police department over. And so that's a big concern for us with the businesses downtown as well. We want those things to flourish, and so that is a focus for us right now, is how to make sure that our shoppers and business people can be comfortable downtown, and people at gas stations and things like that won't be being bothered. And so, so anyway, thank you for having us.
Thank you.
And please feel free to call too, any time when you have a question or concern.
And one of the things, just as a reminder, Chris Street, I interviewed Chris today, and the interview's gonna start at 9:00 on 1410 a.m. So when you leave here, tune into 1410 a.m., and you can listen to the whole conversation. It's very enlightening. And keep in mind, he talks to Jeff Sessions every other day. So he's kinda like a really good guy to know, don't you think? And I talked to Chris about, listen, I don't need to talk to Chris about Jerry Brown. He knows, but so anyway, keep that in mind when you listen to the conversation, because I have a feeling you know probably where this is gonna go. But they're raising that specter for the first time in our nation's history, that that's gonna be a consideration about the Logan Act, so. Anyway, thank you very much for attending. Thank you to the Tea Party and everybody concerned, and we'll see you the next time.
Go Yuba City Bears!
Go Yuba City Bears, okay. What about those gold socks?